Good morning, everybody. Morning and welcome to the Town Council Regular Meeting, Wednesday, November 6th, at 8:00 a.m. in the Rose Room. Can we stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, item number two. Are there any visitors who would like to speak?
Good morning. I just wanted to introduce everybody to our new captain. Captain Ken Kane is coming to us from the Connecticut State Police. He just retired as of the 30th of the month. He was the number two in the Connecticut State Police as the Lieutenant Colonel in charge of field operations for the entire state of Connecticut. He brings a great wealth of experience and leadership to our department. We're very lucky to have him. He's excited to come. I wanted to just give you all an opportunity to put a face with the name, see him, and give him a chance to say hello and say a couple of words, if they don't mind.
Welcome.
Good morning.
Thank you. Good morning. Glad to be here. Very excited to be here, working with Clinton and the community and all of you, getting to know the officers of the department and going around town and sort of as much information as I can, but looking forward to working with each and every one of you. And if you ever need anything, give me a call, give me a shout. I'm still trying to get the cell phone, the email stuff worked out, but really looking forward to working with this community. So, thank you. Thank you.
Welcome aboard. It's official now.
Item number three, the approval of minutes, October 30th, 2024. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Motion carries. All right. Item number four, appointments. First, we have Carol Walter. She, we would like to be appointed to the Zoning Board of Appeals, a full seat for a term until 11/20/27. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Congratulations, Carol.
Thank you.
You know the drill, signing in. Okay, all right. The next is Judith Danick, and that is for America 250, the Advisory Committee, for a term until 1/1/2026. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Motion carries. Congratulations, Judith.
Thank you.
And if you would go to the town clerk at your convenience to be sworn in.
Yes.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Item number five, the Connecticut Surfcasters. Would you like to speak about?
Good morning. I'm here representing Connecticut Surfcasters. We tend to have a Christmas party on November 4th from about 7:00 p.m. to about 9:00, 9:30. I think there was a discussion of whether we can serve alcohol or not.
All right, so you're looking for a motion to, or we're looking for a motion, to approve Connecticut Surfcaster's exemption request to ordinance 194-4A and 194-5A for their December 4th holiday event. A motion?
He made a mistake. November, he said November 4th.
It can't be. It can't be. We're already finished with it.
Oh, yeah.
It's December 4th. We just assumed, yeah, okay. Motion? Second?
Second.
Discussion?
You do realize that to have insurance, you have insurance to cover?
Yes, we do.
If you just stop, if you'll stop at PD, we'll help you with the temporary, like a permit for the day, so.
Okay, so I should stop and see you?
Please.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Motion carries. All right, congratulations. You're welcome. Number six, Department Update, and first we will have Sharon, our town clerk.
Hello.
Hello.
Thank you. I want to thank you very much for coming, because I know that this was going to be, you had a late, long day and a late night last night, and we do appreciate it, but I think we're all eager to hear how you liked it and.
Well, we all know how it turned out.
Well, well, but for the local, how it went.
Yeah. Well, my election started September 23rd, when I started issuing overseas an absentee ballots for military and overseas persons, so it's been a long haul, so I'm glad it's all over with. We had, we have approximately 10,289 registered voters, about 7,942 approximately turned out, so we had about a 78% turnout, which was a little more than 2020. We had 75% turnout in 2020, so we had a little bit more, but that was good. We had about 5,100, a little more than 5,100 showed up during early voting, so it was about half of people, which was nice, so our polls weren't overrun yesterday. You know, we had a little bit of spurts with long lines, but nothing, nothing like it was in 2020 with our three, four-hour lines down the road, so that was nice. We had 95 people registered during the early voting 14-day period. We had 130 people do same-day registration yesterday. We issued 601 absentee ballots. We had 55 that didn't make it back. We had 526 we handed over to the registers. Let's see here. I think that's about it there. Overall, it was a good day. I'm sure you all know that yesterday was the last election for winning in June. They're not running again, so we have new registrars, so hopefully I'll get to meet them one of these days. I have no idea who they are, so I'm looking forward to getting new connections with these people. But overall, it was a good day. We didn't have any, no incidents that I know of.
Smooth as silk.
Yeah, it was nice. It was a nice, steady day, so I think that was, that's about it.
Great. Thank you again, Jim.
I'd like to make a comment. I'd like to commend our voting registers, whoever was involved.
Oh, that's wonderful.
It was run very professional, and I don't think anybody could say anything about the way we ran our early voting, the way the people checked us in, all kinds of way of checking IDs and whatever. I think in light of the fact that there was still some stuff, a couple of minor clips here and there around the state, I think Clinton should be very proud of people that do the job here in this town. You're a pride to Clinton.
I'd also like to point out, too, that we worked very closely with our PD and our Emergency Management Director, and they were on it. We had plans in place, backups just in case. We wanted to make sure that everyone in this building felt safe during the process, no one was deterred from coming to vote, and that if at some point there was a situation, we had alternate plans ready to go. There was strong police presence, which, thank you very much, Chief, for that. I know that went a long way, and I want to thank them, too, for their, their contribution to encouraging people to come vote in a safe space. Thank you.
All right. Next, we have Rob Derry, who is the harbor master with a report.
And, I'm sorry.
And Dean Adams is here as well, the chair.
So, good morning, everyone. Michelle asked me to come and kind of give you an overview of what's going on at the town arena. I've been the dock master down there since mid-July of 2022, so this is my third season, my second full season, and I would tell you, it's the best retirement job, if anybody's ever interested. So, we have a great time down there. Yeah, I'm glad Dave is bringing him on board when he retires. So, Dave and I are giving you a brief overview of what's going on down there, how things have been going. So, there's our arena right there. You can look down and see those docks right in the middle, those four, it's A, B, C, and D right in the middle of that. Off to the right is Cedar Island and the gas dock. Off to the left is Harborside where Shanks is located. You see the boat ramp right there, and then Esposito Beach. So, between the boat ramp to the left, the docks, parking lot, all the way over to Esposito Beach, that's all the town arena. That's where we maintain down there and try to keep clean and presentable for everybody. There's the dock master office. Abby, here's all, tell me, I have the best town office in the town with that nice little view. I put that there purposely. So, one thing we're to talk about, and I know this has been coming up, is that potential deck. That's something that we're looking to do. So, if you look at that top photograph, off to the, to the left side, right here, so the deck, the potential deck is looking to go from here, pushing out towards the boat ramp. I'll show you a picture of a drawn layer, but this, keep that in mind, these fences, this fence will come down, and the viewing platform is going to be over there, is the game plan. We'll talk more about that in a minute. Boat launch, so there's our boat launch, and we had a significant uptick this year with daily boat ramp passes as well as seasonal transient fees. I'll talk about that in a minute, but this year, we did, I think, with approval of the town council through the Harbor Management Commission. It was $20 to launch it for the day, now it's $25, so that helped with a little bit of intake as well. Esposito Beach, kayak launching area, again, part of the town arena. While boats are beach, I can get to see anybody swim there. So, much more of this where people go in a kayak and kids jump around and play. I know part of this improvement program and project we've been talking about is to do something with that, try to kind of bring it back around a little bit. I think maybe Dave will talk about that shortly. This concession stand, and thanks to the town council for, I know you guys readjusted the rent and really had everything work from previous years. I can tell you that Mike and Jake, that ran that this year, did a phenomenal job. Mike was open until October 27th, so he really stretched out, and he loved it. He's so excited to be working on the menu for next year, and he really, really had a good, good year down there. But I can tell you, having them open like that and the way that Mike was, it really established almost like a community down there. It was really, really beneficial to have that compared to the last two summers I was there, it was completely different. So, thank you for your support in that. There's the bulkhead area, a walkway right in the middle area. As you guys know, this is another part of it. We keep that clean and try to make that presentable for people to come down and hang out. So, what's my role down here? So, I run the day-to-day operation of the town marina around the docks. I work closely with Todd Pejek and his staff. I will tell you, Todd and his staff are awesome, because the way that it is set up, our budget through the Harbor Management Commission, our budget really is just the salaries for myself and for the dock workers down there. So, if we need equipment or picnic tables or whatever is going on down there, Todd kind of deals with that from the, from his, his area, and Todd and I, we work very, very well together. I schedule supervisor marina staff. We had about eight staff down here this year. We'll talk about that in a moment, but we had a different staff this year, which I think made it a lot better, so I'll talk about that. I'm a point of contact for all the people that, there's 57 slips as well as 18 stays, so I, myself, my personal cell phone number is on the website. I get calls all the time from people, which is fine. I'm completely good with that, because that way I know what's going on. So, I mean, sometimes when I've been down there, I'll be, I was on vacation, I get phone calls, which is fine, because I deal with it and I know what's going on. I'm also a point of contact for anybody who calls up and has any questions, which I get phone calls all the time. I got an email, I think it was two years ago, Dave and I, you guys probably saw that video from that TV show from the England, right? Yeah, yeah. Have you ever seen that video?
Yeah.
Okay, we got, I have it here. I showed you in a minute. Anyways, they came out from England and did a story for their TV show out in England about where they, the whole idea was for lobster landing, but then when they came out, they contacted me and Dave helped them out with the boat to get around and show them, and so Dave and I actually brought them around the harbor, and it was actually pretty fun and I have a cool video if you guys want to see it. But that's really a point of contact from England for the town arena, right? All right. So, I schedule all the transient dock reservations. We do have four identified transient docks for people who want to come here and stay for the night. This year, significant uptick in that, and so many people came over here, and when they actually got here, they said, you know, we're from Long Island, we look on the map, oh, it's in Harborside, check that out. They came over, like, oh my God, this place is awesome. So, there was so much of that this year, I think word is spreading, because it's a cool little spot with the restaurants and the vibe down there. I work with Dave Adams and the commissioners on the Harbor Management Commission. We meet monthly, obviously, and so whenever they need from me, I get to take care of. So, I work very closely with all the town offices, Michelle, your staff, Monica has been awesome since she's been there, helping me out tremendously. Obviously, I mentioned Todd. The fiscal office, Bob and his staff, Ivan's been very helpful. The Shellfish Commission, obviously, Chief of Man with his staff, I work very closely with, as well as Chief of Man here in the fire department. So, it's just a great vibe down there, a great working relationship that we all have. I monitor the financial intake for the fees that are collected, from the ramp fees as well as the transient fees, and then Monica really helps me out with tracking the seasonal updates and getting the seasonal fees paid off, and so we all work together there. I work very closely with Jake and Wes down there to try to help them out, be in point of contact and getting them up and running and do what I can do on my side to help out. Again, it was very, very positive here. We all worked really, really well together. I work very closely with all the marinas down there. They'll call me up, hey, Rob, can I put a boat here? You know, let's help them out. We all work as one big team down there with, with the Shapiro's over at Cedar Island, and then John Benchwell next door at Harborside, so we all work very, very closely together. I sign the slips and stays, make sure that we maximize out, so I try to do my best to get every, every stay and every slip assigned. I would tell you, this year, we have our next meeting coming up with Harbor Management Commission. I think we have 13 applications to get in here, and I think I have three slips available. So, we definitely have more people trying to get in than we have availability, which is a good thing. And then, like I mentioned, Monica has been tremendous since she took over and helping Mary out in the office, the town manager's office. Monica deals with a lot of behind-the-scenes stuff, which is very, very beneficial for myself. All right, so our schedule. So, officially, it's April 1st to November 1st is the operating schedule to the town arena. However, in the off-season, I still, because I live down there, I go down there to make sure everything's cleaned up, and I'll check the office and make sure the garbage and that kind of stuff. I will tell you, the last two winters, I was told when I first took it over, I had to put these ice heaters in down there to occasionally have ice building up, so it doesn't screw up the docks. I put them in the first year, never turned them on, and had to clean them, which was a pain in the neck. So, last year, I kind of washed it, and I never had to put them in, so they never froze. So, we'll watch them again this year. If it does, if I get some freezing, we'll go out and pop them in, so that we make sure the docks aren't damaged. All right, so our operating hours. So, Memorial Day through Labor Day, we are staff seven days a week, seven mornings, seven and a half. That is our busy time. That is our official season, right? But then we can modify hours from April 1st, when we officially open up the office, to Memorial Day, and then Labor Day until November 1st. We just closed everything down November 1st, so we're not staffing the office any further. Although, we still have boats down there, so the weather's been so awesome. So, we're, folks will be out probably hard about November 15. So, this year was a little bit different. Mine here at the marina, it was all like high school kids that were working down there, which is great. They're all great kids. I know the families, they were terrific, but they were high school kids, right? So, I had to go down there and say, get off your phone, you, somebody at the dock, get over there, right? So, what I ended up doing a lot this past year, talking to Dave, I said, listen, I'm going to be relaxed a little bit. There's a couple retirees that came down there, some school teachers, and we still had a couple of high school, college kids that worked down there, so it was a nice mix, and I think that's what really led to this year being so successful, because they were on top of things. They were very engaging with everybody down there. They really were beneficial into getting the vibe down there and the culture down there. I mean, I was spending, I think, $10 a week on dog treats, you know? They had the dog treats, everything, it's all the dogs come down, they love us, so it's been really, really beneficial. And the staff that works down there, their daily job is to monitor the boat ramp, to collect the fees, have people come in and out. They monitor the parking lot, it's parking a couple of weekends during the year, it does hit curries down there, so we have to go out there and kind of make sure everybody's all squared away. They sell the season boat ramp passes down there, which sold about 150 this year. They actually, we sell shellfish licenses, although we didn't sell many this year, because the shellfish beds were closed the majority of the season, they just opened up recently. And then, we ice all the stakeholders, and just make sure the place is clean, presentable, and the stamp, hot things down there. All right, so what are the fees? So, the daily ramp fee, drop and boat in, $25 regardless of your resident and non-resident. $25 for everybody. The seasonal ramp pass, $75 for a resident for the entire season, $145 for the non-resident. We have 58 slips, and the cost of it right now is $95 per foot for the boat for a resident and $115 for non-resident. And 30 foot is about the maximum size that we can accommodate at the town arena. We do have 18 stays, those are the sailboats that are out on the pilings. We have 18 of those, it's $900 for the resident, $1,100 for non-resident, and about 40 foot is the biggest boat we could probably put in there, although most of them are about 30 and 35. All right? We have four, four available transient slips. It's $2.50 a foot for overnight docking, and like I said, we had a significant uptick with that this year. And the parking down there is free for anybody. We do get a lot of people that park there because, and go over to lobster landing, because lobster landing, that place is, is very, very busy. They were crazy busy this year, and parking, as you folks know, is not the best over there, so they run us out quick and people park over by our place and walk over. But what's good about that is it kind of brings people, some people come over there when they park, they're like, oh, I didn't know this, this getting the dock cycles here. It kind of gets people to kind of see where we are. So, we have 19 boat trailer parking spaces, 54 car spaces there, and then that gravel lot behind the, our office is for boat owners and some people on Cedar Island to park there. We have 18 available spots there. If we do have overflow, which has happened a couple times, we send them down Riverside, beyond the harbor parkway, and park them along the fence there on the grass. All right, so here's our totals. This is 2023. So, end of year 2023, we sold 383 daily ramp passes, and you see the money that was made for that one. And then, season passes, we sold 146 with the fees there, and then our slipping stakeholder fees down below right there for everybody that is there for the season. Transient fees last, that year was only $2,680 for people that came over, stayed overnight, and then we collected that fees and they stayed. So, year total for that year, 2023, was $118,405, right? So, pretty good, pretty good. So, 2024, this year. So, this year, we sold 100, over 100 more daily ramp passes, and I think that's because of the people paying, the staff that had down there were actually on top of things, and they were really watching it closely, so a significant uptick with the passes, which brought in more money. The ramp passes, we sold about five more than last year, so these fees went up from the previous year, so that also helps out, that's why these numbers are a little bit higher and on top of selling more. The slipping stay fees, $115,373. Again, that went up a little bit from last year, so that will follow with bringing more revenue, revenue in. And this is a weird one, it was really kind of a dirty fee. The transient fees, we, over $7,300 for people coming to here, staying overnight or whatever they'd be doing, and that's a 175% increase from last year. So, I, that people coming in here and seeing this, word is spreading amongst the voters and community that this is a nice little spot down there, and we try to make it very friendly, very easy for them to come in. So, this year, right, 25% increase, we took in about $148,000 from the town. So, we're really, I think we're really making a headway down there. You know, if we can get that viewing platform up and running, I know there's some with Abby, here's all, she's working behind the scenes, trying to really help us out with the Harbor Management Commission, as well as Michelle's office and Todd Pejek, that's going to bring up just more people down there. I think it's going to be hugely beneficial for everybody coming down there, which is going to drive this up even more, hopefully. All right? So, this is that proposed viewing platform behind my office. My office is over there on the left, so this is just off from that walkway I showed you. Right to the right is the boat ramp. So, this is what we're looking to do, and I don't know, I can maybe turn it over to Dave as to where we are, Dave, or if you want to chime in, or, I know I talked to Abby, keep going. Okay, all right. Sorry. You're on a roll.
Don't slow him down.
So, I did talk to Abby the other day, and she told me that she is waiting on a ship grant that's been applied for. Ship grant is a small harbor improvement program grant, and that money has to be done, we got it yet or not. If we do get that money, Abby says that money's going to be earmarked for the engineering costs for this particular platform. And then I know between Michelle's office and Harbor Management Commission, they're working on funding to, to support this. So, that's, that's one of the big projects that we're hopefully looking to move forward to, and I can tell you that when people hear about this, they're all walking in, they're very, very excited that hopefully this goes in. All right? All right, additional kayak racks at Esposito Beach, because they're, the kayak racks are managed by a parking rec. So, we have them at Esposito Beach right there behind the town ball, as well as the town beach. And I think the parking rec will tell you that they're always booked up every season. Matter of fact, I think there's a line when they open up the doors, when they put them out for in the spring, for people to get on these. So, having more kayak racks would be beneficial. We talked about some sort of landing project over at Esposito Beach to have access, because being over the kayaks at low tide, it's kind of mucky, so we're trying to get some sort of idea where we can get the kayaks out there all day, all tides, to make it more usable for the kayak community. Get additional picnic tables for that, for the potential deck that's going to be out there, new umbrellas and what else is going to be down there. So, these are small things, but this is things that's what we're going to do as well. And then also add 15 a.m. town marina dock power on the end of transient docks, because I, we do get bigger boats, we can accommodate up to a 15-foot boat for overnight on the dock, so, and they're both, the power that we have down there, it doesn't, sometimes it doesn't, it's not suitable, they can still use it, but they need more power for these bigger boats, so we're looking to add that out at the end. And that's just our budget. So, 2020 is our budget right now. So, our overall total operating budget, which is just our cost of all of us working down there, totally is $63,000. So, we always be, we're always within the budget, so, I mean, for the money that, that's coming in and the money that's costing to run the marina, I think we're doing pretty well. So, we're very proud of the marina. We love being down there, it's just, it's really, I, you know, my only downfall is that it's not a full-time, year-round job, right? Because, because the world, the community that we live in here for the budget, but that's pretty much it in a nutshell. Hope you guys ask in the office, any questions, any that can address, anything?
Well, so, Rob.
Yes?
Well, first of all, that's the best update that we've gotten. Honestly, that is really, really good. You put a lot of time into that, so I appreciate it.
I appreciate it.
That's really good. And, you know, I lived here my whole life, and I didn't know half the stuff you put up there, and the fact that you're bringing in $150,000 and, you know, on a $60,000 operating budget, that's pretty amazing. So, my only question is, and just awareness, and I think you know this, and Abby knows this, Michelle knows it, but that viewing platform has to be under contract before the end of the year for the ARPA funds. And, so I have two questions on that. One, were you consulted on that idea? Do you think that's like a really good idea, and that's really, there's a huge need for it, and people are going to love it? And secondly, do you think it'll be under contract by the first?
So, as far as people, when it comes to, like, people are like ecstatic about it. They're like, oh my God. It's just going to add, because if you go down there in the summertime, there's not a lot of seating that, that you sit there on the bulkhead and actually look out and see the water, so. We have six picnic tables, really, or maybe eight. So, adding that out there is going to help out, number one, the concession stand, whoever's in there is going to be hugely beneficial, and just adds, I mean, listen, you want to come down on a Saturday, Sunday morning, sit on that deck and just watch the boat ramps? You can sit there for six hours and laugh your, laugh your brains off, because it's just watching people put boats in the water. So, that's entertaining right there. But no, there is a huge drive, and people are definitely, definitely, there's definitely, there's not been one negative thing that's been said about it. People are excited for it if it were to happen. Now, I'm going to refer to Dave or Michelle as far as the ARPA funds.
So, the $100,000 is for harbor improvements. Part of it would be for offsetting some of the engineering costs along with the ship grant if we get it during, before the end of December. We also have met down there, and some of those funds, which will all be under contract, will go to additional projects down there, such as additional kayak ra, ramps, kayak racks, helping create and clean up Esposito Beach and make it more handicap accessible, and the 200, 200 amp power?
50.
I'm sorry, 50 amp power to the end of the docks. Todd's working on getting a price on what that will be, and more picnic tables. So, there's a lot of ways that we will make sure that that, those funds go towards the improvement in that area and be under contract by the end of December. Yes. So, it's going to, those funds are going to that area as a whole, but we are waiting on the ship grant to see, because ideally, if we get those funds, we'd rather use those for the engineering costs to make sure that we can do this and what is required to extend it in the pilots and all of that. But we've met out there, Dave, myself, Rob, Todd, and Abby walked through it and have a list of all the areas, so I assure you that the funds will definitely be under contract in a specific area that will benefit this area. And, and this is great. I mean, seeing the increase in revenue, making it tourist attraction is, is huge for us, and it's an economic, you know, stimulation for the town as a whole, because we're bringing more people into Clinton, whether it be through the marina, and we can advertise down there to get them to come more into the center area, so it's a win area, a win-win.
Hi, I'm Dave Adams, I'm the chairman of the Harbor Mission. We spend our days training Dan and his enthusiasm. It's like, okay, whoo!
Eat my corn!
I thought it was going to happen, it's been a great addition to the Harbor, Harbor Management Area. But anyway, just to add to what you were saying, the, there's a couple of other features. I have unofficially brought some of the coastal engineers down there and showed them what's going on. I said, you know, this, whether it was us or ARPA or not, I don't know, but I said, let's just get our ensure on this thing. So, if you, the local coastal engineering folks know already what's going on, so we're kind of preparing them for, okay, this is what we're thinking, what do you think, and, you know, what can we, be sure that the DEEP is going to say yes to and put their stamp for approval on. There's another component to it as well, and it's not just a viewing platform or an extension of, you know, sitting areas, but I've also been in contact with kind of a handshake with the Morgan School Trust, and we're thinking about putting some There's another component to it as well, and it's not just a viewing platform or an extension of, you know, sitting areas. But I've also been in contact with kind of a handshake with the Morgan School Trust, and we're thinking about putting some marine educational things, like cages underneath it, so that we can bring the kids down and have the cages come up, and they can look at the shells and the oysters or whatever, the crabs or whatever they're going to look at. And that portion of the thing can be funded, as I said, on a handshake so far by the, it hasn't been designed yet, but we'll see how much it costs, but by the Morgan School Trust. So there's other facets to this, and I think it's going to be a great thing for the marina, the town. I mean, obviously, the water in our harbor is the focal, or should be the focal point of our community. It's one of the reasons the town is actually here. So given the fact that if we bring everybody down, listen, we'll worry about the parking later kind of thing, just get people down there, have them enjoy the waterfront, and, and, you know, we'll take it from there, so.
Yeah, well, if you guys are excited about it, then that's the, that's the key thing, because you're there, you're the experts, you're living it. So if you guys are excited about it, then I'm excited about it.
Yeah, that would be awesome. It really would be.
Yeah, it's, it's going to be great. And Rob's been, you know, the biggest proponent of this thing, and, you know, I'm surprised there's no, you know, billboards down there or something, but.
Don't give any ideas.
Not yet, necessarily, not yet. The question I'm worried you have to get to it, right. But, you know, to make the harbor area, and specifically the town dock, a focal point like this, I mean, it's been great. And I'll go back to Rob's comments about, you know, renewing the lease for J and M. Those guys have been fantastic down there. I mean, they're a great tenant. They love the idea of being there. There is a remarkable difference between the people who come down there when it's open versus when it's shut, it's closed. And he was open like all summer, seven days a week. So there was people just milling through there. It was great. So I think people, you folks should be thanked for that, and the towns folks, I think, are getting, you know, kind of what they pay for, and I think it's great. So, but does any other questions? Feel free to come to one of the Harbor Commission meetings.
Anything else?
I just want to add that, you know, I was down there about a month or so. You weren't around, but somebody else gave me a next tour on the other gentleman. And just the use of that area, it's an ugly area. I hate to say it because it's mucky. You can't do anything. You can't bring boats in, you can't bring anything else. So to put that platform there and have some useful, I think it's a fantastic idea.
Yeah.
At first, I tell you, when I first heard, but that's why I went down. I said, what, what are you going to do here? I can't do it. But it does make sense, and it will do do.
That's what we have to do.
Make attractions to that area.
We have to focus on the, the opportunities that Clinton has and build upon those. And the marina is a big draw. We have many slips. People who rent slips have the funds. We all know boating is an expensive, you know, hobby. So let's, let's tap that. Let's, you know, start there with some economic development, and it's working. I mean, we already have people coming from all over the state for Lobster Landing, bringing them into Clinton, and now they'll come over and see our beautiful marina, and it'll just grow from there. So that's the big plan. So we're putting these little things in place to get us there.
So speaking of mucky, [laughter] we are starting to get into a dire situation with dredging down there, and dredging of just the marine basin where the police and fire boats are, as well as where the launch ramp is. And we've, we know it's coming, and it's, I mean, if we had the money now, I'd say do it now because we need it that badly. But, you know, we're trying to come up with some plans, but I want to put it on your radar. It's probably going to be a million dollars project to do this. And at the same time, we're going to take the docks out, which were brand new about eleven or twelve years ago. They'd never been out of the water. So we need to repair some of the docks. So the thinking is, at the same time we dredge, we're going to put the docks up onto the parking lot area during the winter, repair the docks, put them back in, and everything will be good. But it's, it's a serious project that has to go through permitting and whatnot, but it's coming, and just be aware of that. Yes.
What would you take the timeframe for that is?
As soon as you can get me the money.
Real print money here.
I know, I know. In the next, in the next couple of years.
Realistically.
Realistically, it has to be done in the next three years.
I'm just trying to absorb some ideas.
Two years would be ideal.
Yeah, two years would be ideal.
Dredging is a three and a half too, but it's, that low tide is getting pretty low there.
I think the last time we did this, which is about ten years ago, I think we bonded it out. But you guys can come up with different ideas on how you want to do this, but it's going to be more than a million dollars to dredge it, so.
How long is the process from when you start dredging it to?
The process of that is not that long. It's the permitting process. But we can go with a certificate of permission versus a brand-new permit, because we've done it before. So it's a COP with the DEEP, and it's, it's, it's a, it's a, it's lesser of a process, but it still takes months.
So it wouldn't interrupt the voting season?
No, not at all. It'd be awful, not at all. Like, they usually start in like January, and they're out of there by end of February.
Okay.
So, yeah. Okay. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, any other questions? Thank you, Justin, or Todd, you're here? Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Item number seven, Board of Education teachers' contract. Was Mary Ann going to be here?
She's not. So the teachers' contract went to negotiations. It did go to mediation. The action being presented to the council is to not take action. The contract automatically goes into effect thirty days after it is settled, and this is the same action that the council took of not taking any action three years ago when the contract came up. The totals were for teachers, they came in the top step at two point nine five increase over all three years. Teachers within the steps move up a one percent for two years and then a half a step the third year. This did go to mediation. It has come in below the state average. The administrator contract is a four-year contract, and the total adjustments is in the first year, three point fifteen percent readjusted compensation for various positions, and then year two, three point fifteen percent, years three and four, three percent. So we just wanted to make you aware that this has been done and that the council is comfortable with not taking action and letting the, the course go the way that it went three years ago, and in thirty days it takes effect.
You said teachers two point nine and admin three point one five?
Yes. Yes. And again, it came in under the state average and did go to mediation. Just wanted to let you all know that's.
And the board of ed approved it?
Board of ed approved it, yes.
Okay.
Do you need action for us to not take action?
Yeah.
Yep.
Yes.
I have a motion that the town council hereby votes to not reject the union agreement reached between the Clinton Board of Education and the Clinton Administrators Association as voted on by the Board of Education on ten seven twenty twenty-four.
Second.
All right, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Motion carries. Yes?
Abstaining.
Sir, you're abstaining? Okay. All right. Item number eight, authorizing resolution for master municipal agreement for rights-of-way projects, and Michelle will speak to that.
It is a standing resolution that is signed every year, correct, Mary Ann, I believe? Reoccurring? The right-of-way one?
I don't believe it's every year, but it's the last one.
Oh, the last one has expired.
Yep.
So it's just giving me authorization to sign that.
All right, so looking for a motion that Michelle Benavena, town manager, is hereby authorized to sign the agreement entitled Master Municipal Agreement for Rights-of-Way Project.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Motion carries. Item number nine, Connecticut Secretary of State Grant for Early Voting.
So the Secretary of State has provided us with forty-one, a little over forty-one hundred dollars to help offset costs for early voting. So just need a motion to sign that.
Motion to authorize a town manager, Michelle Benavena, to enter into an agreement on behalf of the town for the Connecticut Secretary of State Early Voting Grant in the amount of four thousand one hundred and ten dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Motion carries. All right, budget calendar, twenty twenty-five.
So we put together a budget calendar. I'm excited about the budget season. My feel, Bob and I are, Bob and I are looking in, are very, very much looking forward to it. And so we got the calendar all set. Requests have gone out already to all the departments. With, we're changing up the process a little on the back end with what the form is that they complete for their request. And I sent everyone an email being mindful that we are stewards of the taxpayers' monies and that what we need to, their, their requests should be based on need to run their department and be mindful in the process of doing so. So that request and form went out to them. We should be getting that back in a few weeks. And then this is the calendar to follow for your review and approval.
Do we need to?
Yes.
Motion to adopt.
Right.
Okay, great. Motion to adopt the twenty twenty-five budget calendar. Second.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Motion carries. All right, great. Item number eleven, a line item transfer request from Communications, and that is in the amount of sixteen hundred dollars from training to equipment. Is there a motion?
I couldn't, I couldn't read. What, did I say a chair?
Correct.
Chair.
A chair?
Yeah.
All right. Your butts are in at twenty-four seven.
Yeah.
And for some reason, when we redid the ECC, we had planned on replacing the chairs, and somehow that fell through. We also blew up the refrigerators, the money that we normally would have had, had to go to that. We did have additional funds that were reimbursed from the state for a training. So I'm actually over my training budget for what we had approved for the fiscal year. So there's, there's no impact. We just had to do the line item transfer to follow proper Jenny Pritzker, making sure that he bought that.
Okay, so moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? All right, motion carries. Town managers' report.
Okay, so, good morning, everyone. I'm happy to be back at work. I was out there for a little bit. So the chief already shared my first item, which was going to be welcoming Captain Kane and giving you a few highlights about his career, but chief already did that. So, welcome, Captain. We're happy to have you on board. So, and he was sworn in on Monday. There was also an award ceremony at the, for officers on November seven, I'm sorry, October seventeenth. And I just want to acknowledge Police Commission Award went to Officer Brian Corbin. The Paul Egan Community Service Award went to Corporal Kyle Soondro, and Corporal John Higgins.
Harkins.
Harkins, sorry. Officer, do you want to do?
We're, we're, keep going.
Would you like to, so Officer of the Year is who?
Officer of the Year.
Oh, I'm on Corporal Jason.
Corporal Jason Frye was awarded Officer of the Year Award and Ship Award, which is, my purview, the, we tried to change it up because I didn't want to have my footprint over everything in the ACC. So we decided as, as a change of course, that we need an awards committee come in, and one representative from the Police Commission to sit on that awards committee, and they will go out the awards, and they pick Officer of the Year. We'd actually had written that we wanted that to come from the ground up from inside the troops and have their peers vote on that, but they all rejected that. The Police Commission stepped in, they, they chose Corporal Frye, who's, who's an excellent choice. I mean, he always puts forth a hundred and ten percent, always looks for ways to improve the department, but a great job with our K9 program, and specifically, you know, really showed his commitment to the community by diving into a frozen river in Montana, T-SAC, in, in January, in freezing conditions to pull out. Especially this person who was taunted to go in, was beginning to lose consciousness, they all got stuck in there. Also, Deputy Fire Chief Mike Deff, one of my dispatchers, Tassos Clados, one of my officers, Morgan Renzo Lombardo, they all, and Joe Popovich, all went in to pull this individual out who was losing consciousness. But just a fantastic award ceremony. And then my award is the Ship Award, which is to reinforce our Department cornerstones of service, honor, integrity, professionalism. And this year, that went to Sergeant Mario Caruso, really a dedicated individual that exemplifies our core values and really model, and models our cardinal rules of treating everyone with courtesy, professionalism and respect, always being truthful and sincere, and always putting forward your best efforts. He's been a model that for all of our employees. So he, he received that award as well.
And Dispatcher of the Year was Dylan Rocket.
Dylan Rocket, lovely, great hire. So I really like where we sit right now. We've kind of made a little course correction, and I think, you know, with the addition of Captain Kane here, we really have an opportunity to method. We have a great staff. Our prop is very, very young. So they have all the skills, they have the heart, they have the character, they have the integrity, they just don't have enough laps around the track. So our job now is to really concentrate on methoding these up and providing my Police Commission and the town with viable candidates to mediate forward, keeps you in the trajectory that we're on, which I think is very strong.
Okay. So congratulations to all of them. In some of the activities we've done with the employees here at Town Hall to build some team building, we, for the first time for the Town Hall, employees participated and supported the Garden Club's annual scarecrow contest, and we won third place for our first attempt. There was over forty-five scarecrows. So we were excited. We had pizza, and we all, we put it together. It was great. And the senior connection placed first. So two town organizations that participated, one which was a great display of, of teamwork from town employees. And then we also hosted a breast cancer awareness day, and your employees, we raised over five hundred and fifty dollars, and we donated that to Smilo. So we had a pink day, and it was great. So we're really making strides within our Town Hall here to, to build some strong connections, and it is definitely working. We received acknowledgement from the Connecticut River Coastal Conservation District, giving recognition for our contribution and support on district activities for twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal years. We received that. As you saw today, we had the harbor dockmaster give his report. We had Sharon give an update on the town clerk. We will continue to have departments come and give the council an update on what's going on in their department. I know we often don't have an opportunity to have that face-to-face time, and that's something that's important to the council. So I thought by trying to line them up with busy times in their department, you know, after, say, you know, revales and taxes and things like that, they can give you updates that are pertinent. So today was the town clerk. Next, December fourth meeting's going to be information technology. Ivan will give you an update on all the improvements that are taking place and the direction that we are looking to move forward to. January eighth will be the tax collector and the assessor. February fifth will be the town planner and zoning, and March fifth, plan, building and public works, the, especially public works, at the time, they'll be able to give you an update on the winter, what it looked like for them, and their preparation for spring. April second, library and police department, and May seventh will be human services and the fire department. So they are all set to give a lovely presentation like we have today. The town will be taking an ad out to support the Morgan Project graduation in the amount of fifteen hundred. This was already approved in the budget, so we don't need to take any action, but just so you know, that will be being done on behalf of the town. And also the Morgan School Yearbook for three seventy-five, again, another item that was accounted for in the budget, which will be taking place. We will be, I have plans to start the Clerks' Union contract negotiations the first week of December. So that will be coming up, and I will be having an executive session with you to let you know how that is progressing. My question that I have to propose to the council is, there has been a lot of conversation about wanting to have a fund balance workshop. My question I'd like to have some conversation with the council about is, do we want to have a fund balance workshop, or do we feel that we should have a strategic plan, goal planning workshop prior to that, so that based on your vision for the town, when you have the conversation about the fund balance, we can use that to fulfill and help some of your visions and plans come, come to fruition? So I wanted to put it to the council to get some feedback on your thoughts, which you'd like to do first.
I like your strategic plan idea, because what you're going to do with the fund balance, we don't know things like that dredging.
Right, like the dredging, right.
So we'll gather that information first, and then we can decide what to do.
I'd like a workshop.
A workshop on the fund balance, or?
Yeah, because I think we need to know where the, where the funding is. Before we talk about what we're going to use, the- Before we talk about what we're going to use the funding for, I think we need to know specifically where these numbers are.
Oh, so I apologize, then. I was, I thought the workshop that you wanted to have was to put those funds in potential buckets of projects.
I think it's all one and the same thing.
But you just wanted, right, but how do we know where we want to assign those funds unless we know that we want to work on economic development, we want to put some money towards that?
I think to create a foundation, and I know this has been a continuous conversation in budget seasons over time, is to create a foundation, right? You know, we've talked about the undesignated fund policy that we have in place, and I think it'd be important for us to say, hey, you know, what level of savings does the Town need as taxpayers that we need to keep in the savings account in case something happens? The rainy day, you know, the bonding requirements in terms of keeping our bond ratings. So, you know, we, I think the strategic plan is super important. I think that's this continuous vision of where we want to be in our three-year, five-year plan. That workshop alone can probably take some time. When we look at all the projects within Town that we have lining up, how it's going to affect our capital budget planning, how it's going to impact operating budgets, but I think that undesignated account and the savings account, it's really important for us to agree going into budget season, so we can essentially create some guardrails or some like, we all agree that this is where we need to be because. And then as we look at capital planning and what our future looks like, whether we're going to bonding on something, how that's going to impact, I think it's, Mike's opinion, I think it's important that we lay that foundation first of that undesignated fund policy, that what's the right amount of money to leave in the savings account based on the things that we see in the future.
So, my interpretation of that is, we almost need to sandwich it. So, we need to have a fund balance conversation where we get a strong understanding of what our fund balance is, the policy, how much we should have.
Yep.
Then a strategic plan workshop, then a fund balance workshop to assign, if that's something the council would like to do, some of that undesignated fund balance to specific areas and goals based on the strategic plan and goal workshop we have. Does that sound?
That's a good summary. That's exactly what that sounds like.
Okay.
I just have one question of Mike, and that is, is that fund balance workshop going to question our current 15% policy? Is that what you want to do?
Ultimately, yeah, we have a policy in place, essentially, that says it's 15%, correct?
Yes.
And I think the most important part is, is that 15% in 2024 accurate based on what we project in the future in terms of, you know, increase this or decrease that, and our project need or our long-term capital project? So, you know, one goes with the other. It's important, we have to have that vision and look at the next capital, you know, projects and programs as presented here from the Harbor Commission, but we also need to come to that safe number. And, you know, going back, looking over the last 10 years, which is in the annual report, the financial annual report, you can look at the 10 years of history already that we have. And I think the next five is important to determine where we're going to go, what the appropriate amount is based on history, and what our projections in the future are for spending or, you know, what we have for needs in the Town. And, you know, I know Todd's presented paving projects or road projects, we have dredging projects at the marina, there's a lot of stuff that's going on, but if we can agree on that foundation collectively and collaboratively, then I think we can set, you know, what's appropriate for the future.
And how many, how much funds we have to work with?
Correct.
And how much we feel we need to have in addition to that 15% potentially for situations that may arise as a?
All the hurricanes, sandies, the irens, or whatever comes up in terms of emergencies, or what's appropriate in the savings account to keep there based on where we are today?
So, then, the next part of that is a timeline to do this. Do we want to try to get this, all these workshops in prior to the budget season starting?
Yes.
Starting, or do we want to try to overlap it a little? Because we need to see the capital requests that are coming in too, which we will be not getting until end of November, December. So, those are the capital requests.
I honestly think between 30 minutes before one of our next meetings or two, we just set some time aside to come in a little bit early and say, hey, what, here's, here's my thoughts on what this is. I don't think it'll take too long, but I think we need to, you know, everybody's got their vision on what's appropriate for, you know, and on designated. But I think the more we collaboratively come to the middle on saying, hey, here's what I've seen, or here's some, what other places are doing, it's important for us to set that foundation to move forward to now say, what capital projects can we take on, or what, when are we going to have to go to bonding, and what's that going to look like, and how's that going to impact things?
The foundational number piece needs to come before budget season, and I think that can happen relatively soon. I don't think that's a lot of conversation. 30 minutes sounds like the right amount of time to talk about that.
And it's based on what? What are we basing this on? Our decision to, the past? What are we looking at? What should we look at?
I mean, it's going to be what the departments need too.
Right.
I mean, it starts with the departments and what they're going to come in, they're going to say, these are our capital improvement projects that we need. So, if we have that idea as well, then it kind of limits maybe to what we can do on this side. But, I mean, ultimately, at the end of the day, we know 15% is our threshold. We're going to need to know the number that we're going to have in undesignated that we are going to have available. I mean, so going into budget season, we need that number, because we need then to go down that path and know this department wants this, this department needs this, so that we can then budget that, so then we know as a council, we have a dredging project, we have, like, as a town-wide project. So, I mean, it's basically just, it's a big picture at the beginning, but it's mostly just, what are we going to have available that we can allocate?
So, based on our capital?
And we're all working together on that number, knowing that we're not going to be, if our threshold's 15, you know, do we want to be at 16%? I certainly don't want to, because God forbid something happens, then we jeopardize that 15% threshold. So, we just need to make sure, I believe, my opinion is that we're comfortable with the projects we're going to commit to.
Okay.
And then we allocate what we want to allocate, but we don't get to the point where we're anywhere near, you know, I mean, my personal opinion is keeping a couple million over the 15%. Should something happen, should a natural disaster happen, should, you know, a blizzard, whatever it may be, because, you know, this is what happened the last time. I mean, we got into a point where we went below 15%. And bonding projects, everything else, it's going to affect everything, because if we lose our bond rating like we did the last time, and then Carl came, and then luckily we were able to change our rating, and we were able to improve our rating. So, that rating, to me, is the most important thing, because as a town, it gives us our ability to borrow.
That begs the question, what that percentage should be in order to retain our credibility?
Right, right.
Because we're going to be bonding at some point.
Absolutely. That is directly correlated to our ability to bond in our bond rating, and that's important from bond council and current numbers within, you know, any municipality of how that's going to determine, and what is that savings account number? You know, we're not in the business of putting extra money in taxation, but at some point, we need that reserve in the savings in case of emergencies and to maintain our bond rating. So, that's really, you know, the core of the discussion of what's the appropriate number, because if we can determine that, then we can look at how much can we potentially fund projects based on those things.
To me, I mean, it boils down to, in the past, it's felt like a little willy-nilly, where we randomly just sort of picked the numbers out of the sky, and then we've argued about whether it should be 22, or 21, or 23. To me, what it boils down to is, we need to get more like scientific and strategic, and I think that's what everyone's saying. Like, let's hear from Bob, how much is in there, what capital projects are out there, what do we need from a bond rating? Like, let's get the facts together and make a, like, a non-emotional decision of what it is before we go into budget season. Like, I asked, the other point of this is, just to be realistic, I asked Carrie for the schedule, just to look at it again. So, we have to straddle here, throwing new meetings onto the schedule, because we're going to have a crazy schedule, but this is an important one. So, I think, you know, we have to sort of put some other things that we've been working on, on the back burner, and this has got to be, this does have to be one of them. But we can't just do it now, because we don't have all the facts. So, we have to do it closer to, like, Bob says, what, December, like, you know, mid-December, I think we could do that meeting. And that won't interfere with, you know, everything starts up February 20th, so I think we have to be ready.
We also have to remember too, when we have so much money in this undesignated fund, things like negotiations and contracts, we are very, we have an ability to pay. So, when, when we are working and negotiating and being viewed by other entities, we have these funds. So, it doesn't give us a lot of room to have conversations.
I think that's the whole point of the workshop.
That's why we need to get these funds.
Let's talk about the numbers.
We can't have, right.
Let's bring the data, let's bring the facts, like, the whole point of the workshop is, I don't think it will take long, because if you say it's going to be at the November, whatever, meeting, I think all of us will come prepared to discuss what we know and what's the bond rating requirements, what have we seen in the past history. You could look at the 10 years of history in the town financial reports, it's not a secret, you know, and you could look at where we were and the impact, where we are now, and what's appropriate based on the future. I think, you know, you're not talking, you know, what's only next year. We're looking at five-year capital planning, we're looking at 10 years.
No, but I was just stating that because, to get what Chris was saying, is, we have to be mindful of what we do leave as a cushion, because it does show, well, when they're coming, you know.
Absolutely, yeah. I just, I think it's an important discussion to have, I think it's really important to have before the budget season, so knowing, going into planning and budgeting, we'll know exactly what we all agree on, so we can say, hey, this is appropriate, which whatever we're under or over that amount, Bob now has some direction, you have direction, Michelle, to say, this is what I have to work with, and here's what your vision or plan is based on the money that's there.
The meeting that we're going to have to talk about it, we're having it now.
I know, I know. Like you said, we're 10 minutes in, we can cut 20 minutes off of the?
I mean, it would be fantastic.
The issue is this.
So, this is what I'm?
We have to have money for emergencies. Now, I've been around here for about 20, 25 years, and because we had such a good balance up until one particular moment here, just before Carl came in, but before that, we always had a good, healthy, undesignated. As a result, when Charlotte and Irene and all those things hit this town, we paid cash, and then we waited for FEMA to send us back the money, which took four, five, maybe six years. So, I always feel comfortable, I'm going to be the ultra, ultra-conservative guy to say, at 15% that whoever down there got the name Mudus, whatever his name is there, he's got that rating. What is his name?
Moody.
Moody, somebody. He's got us at 15%. I mean, I remember when they were comfortable with nine, and then we went to 12, and now it's 15. All right, 15 is good, but that doesn't mean that, okay, now we're going to just, well, we got extra money, we're up to 22, we're going to cut that thing right down. Well, okay, you're right, no use discussing it here, I'll get it at the workshop. But my idea is this, I'm just going to tell you, I'm coming from, the point is, I'm not going to bring that thing down to, oh, jeez, we're about a million over, 15 million, we'll sit on a million-dollar cushion. Million dollars goes like that, especially nowadays with prices.
So, then maybe 15 is the number, maybe it's 60, 17?
Just look at the floods in North Carolina. Nobody expect, you know, astronomical, Florida, the hurricanes, the insurance values, just go call up an insurance company and tell you, you know, ask them what they think, how it is to replace stuff. We need a good cushion above that 15%, a good cushion, not just, oh, maybe a million or two. So, I'll be coming from that strong point that you shouldn't be basing my, my, well, I'll talk about it more.
At the workshop.
So, I think we're going to?
No use tying up the people now.
So, I think we're going to have multiple workshops on just this conversation, I think, understanding the policy, understanding where it came from, the impact on the bond rating, and we will get some, what the final cost were for Irene and Sandy on the Town, so we have some knowledge on, you know, what a hurricane cost, you know, the Town, so we can have that if you're, for an emergency fund, if we wanted to come up with a number. So, I will meet with Bob after this, and we will come up with a schedule and some bullets on what we'll cover at each meeting, and we will send it out to the council to review. And then, based on, because I know going into the holiday season, and we're going to be in budget season before we know it, and everyone's schedule gets a little hairy, we can put out some dates to see what works best, if it's, if it's, if we feel just a half an hour before a Town Council meeting is enough, or if we need like an hour, just a basic workshop. But we'll put out some feelers and see. But once you guys know the agenda and those talking points, you'll be able to judge on how much time you think would be appropriate for that workshop. Does that sound good? Yes.
Final ten.
Yes.
15%?
You don't, I mean, going into the budget season, you should be worried about what this town can afford on an annual basis, and base a budget on it, and do its spending on it and its revenues.
Yes.
You shouldn't be looking at this magic pie of money that's sitting out there. That money could go anytime. You budget and go into a budget season thinking about what we can afford yearly on the taxpayers' back. What can we hit them for and still do improvements to our town and create a budget? That's what you look forward to.
And we look towards increasing revenue in other ways.
I'm worried if we talk a little bit into the budget season about this undesignated money in the bank, this is a savings account. When we go into that budget, we should be worried about the budget.
Absolutely. Our revenue?
And what this town can afford budget-wise, and what the people are ready to spend on an annual basis.
And try to bring in addition, and try to bring in additional revenue so that it takes some of the burden off of taxpayers, which the marine is a perfect example of that. That was an increased revenue. So, investing more into that area will increase the revenue there, will improve our revenue without having that fall on the burden of the taxpayers. Absolutely understand that. So, Bob and I will tackle that, you'll be getting emails in the coming days, and we will get a schedule out to you on that. And that was my last thing in my manager, my Town Manager report.
Chairman's report, I'm thankful that Michelle's back, I'm very thankful for all the work she did while she was at home and should have been resting, but she kept up with everything. I'm thankful that all these positions that we, I still remember were empty, are now full of people who are very valuable to us, and they prove it every day. I want to congratulate Chris, want to look forward to working with Chris now as our experienced state rep. We've got money and?
We need some money.
We're going to ask you for it.
Put your right back.
Yeah, the dredging thing, yeah. And that is it. I'm thankful for what we are as Clinton and who we are. All right. Oh, 14, the council discussion. Does anyone have anything to say?
I've got one thing, I had two things, but we took the workshop, the first request. Second request is, I know with the library, we established a committee to be part of the library project. Now with Pearson moving forward, can we potentially put together a committee from the council to be part of that and be part of the space on the Pearson project for the Town? I mean, I know the budget's not large, but it's a fair amount of money, and I think having input from all sides would be good.
Good idea.
Anyone else wants to volunteer? I said I'd volunteer, but anybody else?
You bring it up.
Well, you did the library. So, the renovations that will happen for the Town, for Pearson, for everything.
And planning out, do you want to be, include the space for the senior center?
Yeah, yeah, and be part of that.
I'd love to work with you on that.
Any concerns that, you know, you know, I just feel, it's not a huge thing, and I know you volunteered for the library, so.
But we should be there, you're right.
Well, committee or somebody from the council.
Well, I think someone from the council.
Yeah.
I think someone from the council would be great, and then we have Christina, who will be on it, obviously, she's working with me on that. Abby, myself, I think we'd be a good core group, and then you could be the liaison reporting on the Pearson.
But you're too busy, I'll do it.
Listen, I brought it up, I raised my hand.
Okay.
Do you want to do it?
If you need help, I'll do it. I like that kind of stuff, you know that.
I know. We were pretty successful with the library.
Good idea, Mike.
So, also, on the topic of workshops, I just got done saying we've got a calendar.
Yes.
But I know we talked about a workshop for you, Michelle, to put your goals, like, put a rubric together or something like that. I'd be happy to help put it together, but I think it should be driven by you.
Okay.
And then approved by the council of, like, here's what you're going to be, you know, your performance, what your performance is going to be based on.
Okay, so, how do you want to do that? Do you want, do you have a?
I think if you put together, like, your ideas of what you think would be fair that your performance is based on, then I can put together like a rubric, and then we can have a workshop and get everybody to, you know, agree to it.
Perfect.
Anyone else? All right. 15, Town Council Committee Liaison Reports, anything there? We've all been too busy. Okay, moving on. We've all been too busy. Okay, moving on. A motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor? Opposed, abstaining, motion carries?
Motion carries.
So, item number 17, looking for a motion to approve the ratification of the Human Services Clinical Position?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining? Great, motion carries. And item number 18, is there a motion to approve the ratification of the Land Use Administrative Assistant Clerk position?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining? Motion carries. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion.
Second?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
You don't have to do it in the morning.